Thirty PM in council chambers. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek, Jaeger.
Yep.
Erickson.
Yes.
Bevins.
Here.
Chesak.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Oday.
Here.
But no.
Do you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we're looking for approval of the agenda. So move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chesak. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. We have an agenda. Next we have the consent calendar. This is a notice of public that all matters listed on are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call.
So move approval of the consent.
Motion by Chesak.
Second.
Second by Bevins. Discussion? Tony?
Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yep.
Oday.
Yes. Moving on. All right. Next we have the public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. So if there's anybody here that wishes to come up and address the council, we will open the public forum at seven thirty-two. Please come forward. And if you're online, press star three. I ask again, if anybody's here to address the council, please come forward. Well, that was easy. We will close the public forum at seven thirty-two. Next we have council committee reports. This is seven A Personnel and Finance Committee Chair, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have five items, the first of which is to review our grant application policy. And let me pull up the report here. The motion out of committee is to recommend is to move to continue with the current policy as written with another review in twelve months, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Johnson?
So if you recall, six months ago, we changed the policy that if there were time sensitive staff could administratively apply for grants. And you notice here in the packet, there were two grants that they did administratively apply for. Both times they did come back to the council and let us know that the application was made. We think it's working so far, but we'll just review it again in twelve months.
Excellent.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak.
Um, Gabe, if we move forward, if I read that correctly, anytime there's going to be a local share or cost to the city, that we should bring it before us, before they apply? Is that correct still?
Correct. The policy still does want the applications to come to us. What we changed six months ago, if there's a time sensitivity of not a regularly scheduled meeting, they can put in an application and then still inform us that they did.
Thank you.
So the time to accept the grant, if there was a local cost share, if there was concern with that, would still come before the council in time to reject a grant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, excellent. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson.
Next up is an update on the Public Utilities Director hiring process. We held a round of interviews on Thursday. We interviewed one candidate, and the motion coming out of committee is to approve the hiring of Paul Sandy as the Public Utilities Director, subject to the following. The hire date will be Tuesday, November fourth. He will be placed on step five of the Public Utility Director Wage Grid, which is equivalent to seventy-six dollars, eighty cents per hour. In recognition of Sandy's previous service with the city, upon his rehire date, Mr. Sandy will accrue vacation at the rate applicable to employees that have completed six years of service. Thirdly, that Mr. Sandy will provided a one-time signing bonus in the amount of ten thousand dollars, and that ten thousand will be returned to us if he leaves prior to completing twenty-four months of service. And finally, to accommodate for a previously scheduled vacation, Mr. Sandy will be credited with forty hours of vacation leave effective on his hire date, but he will not accrue additional vacation hours until that point at which he would have normally earned the initial forty we front-loaded, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Johnson?
So we interviewed him, Nick and myself, and Chris and Jeff and a couple of Public Utility Commissioners. I thought the interview went excellent. I think Paul Sandy would be an excellent addition to our Public Utility Department. But these are the four things that we negotiated with, Chris and Jeff Weldon negotiated with Paul to get him on board with the city. I can answer any questions, or Chris could too.
Thank you. More discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak.
I'd just like the council to consider what we were doing three hundred and sixty-six days ago tonight. That's all.
Thank you.
I'm considering, Jeff. I have no idea.
All right. Seeing no further questions, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion carries. Welcome aboard, Mr. Sandy. Next, again, Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is our agreement for our 2026 health insurance brokerage services. And the motion is to authorize retaining North Risk Partners as our health insurance broker for 2026 for Better Health Collective in the amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars. Further, to approve the attached 2026 service agreement between the City of Brainerd and North Risk Partners, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Johnson?
This is the broker we've been using for a while. They've been very beneficial to the city. You know, it's pointed out here in the agenda item that their negotiations in our bidding process for health insurance this year saved us approximately a hundred fifty thousand dollars in insurance premiums just next year. So it's well worth the twenty-seven thousand.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is to accept the retirement of HR Director Schubert, and the motion is to accept the resignation of HR Director Chris Schubert effective January twenty-fourth, 2026, to approve the updated HR Director job description as presented and to authorize staff to conduct an internal hiring process to backfill the position, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Mr. Johnson?
So Chris has put in her retirement date as of January twenty-third. We're going to post internally. I did ask Chris and Nick to review the org chart and how the HR department is currently structured and if that is the best way to keep it structured moving forward with one director and one assistant under it. Their answer was yes, they want to continue. They think it's best for the city to continue with that structure, so they have no changes to recommend, and we'll just go with the status quo.
Thank you. Chris Schubert, how many years?
Thirty-seven and three-quarter.
That's it, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you for everything. I know we got a few months left with you, but thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
Going to make it an even thirty-eight.
Yeah? All right, there we go. Looks like we have no more discussion, so let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
Our final item is to enter into a service agreement with UFS for a rate study. The motion is to authorize staff to enter into agreement with UFS as presented to prepare financial plans and rate design studies for the sanitary collection system and storm sewer rates, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Chairman Johnson?
It is a very, very simple math problem that we could do in-house, but staff is pretty adamant that they would get better service, better rates for our ratepayers and taxpayers if we went out and hired an outside service to do it, so I'll trust them in their assessment.
Okay. Jaeger?
Yeah, is the anticipated frequency of the study typically two to three years? That's kind of one, that's, last time we did one was a couple of years ago, and that's kind of, is that the, what we should be anticipating is every two, three years?
I think it's, I think that's best practice.
Okay.
Is to look at it every few years, because as costs go up, we need to be adjusting rates up to pay for everything.
Understood. Thank you.
The last time we adjusted rates was, was it just a year ago?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, two years ago? But we had, we had adjusted those rates a couple of times, I believe, in that year, if I remember right? Is that correct? Okay. Either way, it's good to have it right. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
End of report.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Moving on to seven B, this is Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman Tad Erickson.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. We've got nine items on our agenda, the first of which is to approve change orders. Number two, which, of which there are three parts, twenty-four oh seven Lowell Elementary Safe House to School. Motion coming out of committee is to approve the change order, numbers one through three for Lowell Safe House to School, in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven and seventy cents, eleven thousand of which, eleven thousand nine hundred of which would come from state aid, three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven and seventy cents, the remainder of which would be paid by WSB, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chesak.
There was a lot there, so some clarification. There's three items, the first of which is the additional topsoil, which was not included in the original bid and agreement. That is the amount of the eleven thousand nine hundred, of which would be the city's responsibility and would be covered by state aid. The other two, having to do with structure modification and for the pedestal for the rapid flashing beacon, those are the two smaller amounts equaling the thirty-eight hundred and some change, and both of those, WSB said that they would cover because it was their, they took responsibility for that essentially.
Thank you. More discussion, questions? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Erickson.
Thank you. Our second item is discussion on the 2025, 2026 downtown snow removal bid. That's bid singular. Motion coming out of committee is to assign Public Works Parks crews to complete snow removal of downtown, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chesak. Chairman Erickson?
So as I said, there was one bid that came in. It was approximately twenty percent higher than last year's. I think as many of us know that there's, you know, usually only get one bid for this, and discussion coming out of committee was that, you know, despite Park Board having some reservations about their ability to get to the ice rinks and maybe perform some of the maintenance on the equipment during the off-season, we felt like this is a good opportunity, a good, good change to assign Public Works Parks crews to complete the snow removal.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak.
Yeah, we were assured that the park staff will have the proper equipment, and I, I'm confident that if they're expected to do this, they will do their best, so I'm looking forward to see how this turns out. I, no change is always difficult, so I'm going to be a big supporter of our park staff managing this properly and hopefully getting the other responsibilities taken care of as well.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yeah, just wanted to add also, not to overstep, Mr. Chesak, but just to make sure everyone understands that the park staff will only be getting it into windrows, street staff will be taking it from there, so park staff will not be doing all of the snow removal. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Johnson?
Yeah, I just have a question on the finances. Is this special service being, even if it's provided by public employees, it's still a special service to the downtown district. Are we still going to be billing the tax rolls of the property owners for the special service district, and that money will just be going to Public Works instead of a private
Is that part of the discussion, Phil?
Part of it will, the, there will be a savings, and that will be less assessed to downtown businesses.
There won't be a, it will, it will cost more, but I just want to make sure that we're still assessing for this special service. The city doesn't go to my house and remove snow off of my parking lot and driveway before ten o'clock in the morning after. We're doing that downtown now. It's a special service. They need to be billed. Are we going to be billing them for that?
Mr. President, yeah, so the discussion we had, the motion we had, did not address the, the method of assessment, just awarding this, this bid, I guess. I guess my assumption was that that assessment policy stands regardless.
Yes, it does.
Whether we're, you know, doing it through an RFP or our own.
Yes, we'll be doing our time cards, the number of hours that will be tracked downtown will already be recorded, and that will be part of the calculation for assessing downtown businesses.
Thank you. Does that address your question?
That addresses that question. Thank you.
Do you have more questions?
I have more, yeah. So I heard that the city is just, the parks, the parks department, parks maintenance crew is just going to put it to the middle of the street, and then it's going to sit there until the street guys are done with the emergency snow routes in north-south, and then they'll go downtown at the end of the day presumably.
We were told one to two days, Mr. Johnson.
So we'll have big mounds in the middle of the street for one to two days every time we get a four-inch-plus snowfall. Have we addressed this with downtown property owners or businesses or anything?
He, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Haberger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, even our normal streets downtown is the next day. Sometimes we'll get there that same day, but it all depends on the, the snowfall itself. So a larger snowfall, even our Laurel Street here, will be the next day that our streets will be coming by and, and doing that. The one thing that we've talked about is making sure that into parking lots, into driveways, into alleys, that we, that we plow that out so people just don't have to jump over that. So those are type of measures that will be taking place to ensure traffic flow of, of cars can continue to go.
So how special of a service is it if they're just being treated like Laurel Street in front of City Hall?
Every snowfall will be, every sidewalk will be cleared on that, whether it's a two-inch, six-inch, or so forth, right? Because right now, how it is, is if it's a three-and-a-half-inch snowfall, the businesses have to clear that and then clear that to the street, and then we'll take it from there. Here, the city staff will take that. And the example on page seventeen, Max, if you can pull that up on the PowerPoint. So even with, we've calculated a good average winter, a twelve-inch snowfall, two eight-inch snowfalls, three average, four-inch snowfalls, and eight two-inch snowfalls. So we took the calculations and put that in there so that you could really see what our current practice would be, how much we're going to charge every business with a fifty-foot frontage compared to if the city staff were to do that.
Okay, and then one final question, semi-related. I know the city doesn't pay the special services, nor do, does the city plow its sidewalks on, like Seventh Street and Front Street and wherever we have a budding sidewalks. We'll get shoveled, I don't know, three months later, four months later, wait for the May sun to dry it out? Would the public works, the parks guys be doing the sidewalks abutting city streets or city properties?
No, just, just the downtown, just the downtown.
And we own parking lots downtown that have sidewalks that abut them that we do not remove snow from currently, would they be removing that snow?
Would we be, yes. Jesse's in, yes.
Would we be paying the special service rate then?
The frontage for the parking lots is factored into the assessment rules, so that, that portion is covered by the, the parking lot fund, the parking fund. So for frontage on the, on the parking lot specifically.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. I'm, I'm generally risk averse. I don't think this is an improvement on the service that we were currently providing downtown. I think since we have a bidder, a known bidder who's done this for years and years, I would really prefer to award the contract to Tom Spacco, so I'll be a no on this one. Thanks, Mike.
Johnson? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just have more concern with what of this has been communicated to the property owners? Because if we're going from, it used to be that every four inches your, your snow was removed for you, but now every time it snows, it sounds like we're going to be removing the snow, is what I'm hearing now. That's a massive change. And then if we're only removing the snow to the middle of the street and then picking it up later, again, that's a massive change. I would, if I was a property owner who's paying for this, which is what it is, it's a service to those property owners, I would like to make sure that they're aware that this massive of a change is going to be made. I, I don't care which direction we go, because again, this is something we do specifically for these property owners, but we do it for these property owners. And if we're going to be making a change to it of this drastic of a level, I, I'd like to know what they think about it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Erickson?
So clarification, question of Mike or Jesse, pushing the snow to the center in the windrows and having it picked up the next day, or is there a difference from what we're proposing in this to what is currently? I thought I heard it was no difference, and now I, that it is a difference.
Currently, if the third-party contractor does it, they totally remove all the snow downtown.
Okay, so no windrows downtown?
Correct. If the contractor does that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Just one follow-up. So they're, from their special service, amount of money that they're now going to be paying, they're just going to be paying for the snow to be removed from their sidewalk. They're not going to be paying for the windrows removal as well?
They'll be paying for the snow removal, we'll be removing the snow, those windrows the next day.
But that's not going to be charged to them?
Not with, Jesse, can you clarify that one?
Yes, so thirty-some-odd years ago, the, the standard snow removal was calculated into that original calculation and offset from the, from the assessment, because that was intended as what the additional special service was minus what the city was already kind of doing for street removal. So that's factored into the, the calculation already is what, what's expected normally to roll that cost out of it. Kind of the special service, like Mike mentioned, is you get the sidewalk removal, which we do not do elsewhere, as well as the prioritizing of the downtown district over other areas that would normally receive a higher priority. So getting in here and having the snow removed prior to businesses opening, that's a lot of the, the special benefit. The, the positive and negative of this type, type of an alternative is you do get snow removal on every snowfall event rather than just the four inches when we would dispatch the contractor. The detriment is we only have the streets crew available after they've cleared out all the streets to do the windrow removal, but all the, this general traveled areas and the parking lots and sidewalks would still be clear for those businesses to operate.
But the windrow would not be charged to them?
That's factored into that calculation, so.
That's what they are paying for.
Yes, correct.
They are or are not paying for it?
They are not.
They're not paying for it, okay.
Mr. Johnson?
One final observation. I don't know if anybody like goes downtown in the winter, but I do. If you go in the morning after a snow event or during a snow event and the contractor's out there currently working, if you're there at like eight in the morning, and they have the windrows in the middle, and they're working, they're moving snow around, with the bumpouts we have on the corners, which we didn't have thirty years ago, it's a giant pain to try and navigate with those piles of snow in the middle of the road. It's tough to park, it's tough to get out of a parking spot, and even when people are parked, you have the windrow, and the lane of traffic is so narrow that full-size trucks may not even be able to get through it sometimes without kind of off-roading through the windrow. I don't like the idea of windrows sitting in the middle of our core downtown where we have the bumpouts, because that already has the traffic calming, condensing things that we don't have a lot of extra space there for snow to just be sitting around for a day or two.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Erickson?
Given the observations about the difficulties of the, the windrows, is it, a question for staff, is it possible to have streets not wait a day or two and get those done immediately?
That's hard to say. It all depends on the, the number of inches of snow that we get. Our streets are critical to get done first and so people can travel, so it's hard to say right now.
Sure, no, understood.
Just as a point of, you know, consideration, is a lot of municipalities remove the windrows at night, because removing the windows is also highly disruptive to the downtown. You got trucks, equipment, people don't feel like they want to pull in there when there's bulldozers and all that in there, so, you know, something else maybe to consider is you get the windows out the first day, and then that evening or that night, if that's possible, don't know, but we remove the windows after hours in the downtown district.
All things are possible with double time pay.
That's right. Will they just be early on the next day, Gabe?
It seems like, one second, Mr. Chesak, it seems like there's, the debate is, are we going to keep spending more and more on a contractor to do this service, which we know they do a great job? There's, there's no doubt about it. Or do we try and find a different alternative that we're not charging or assessing this to downtown business owners? We've had business owners come in here and speak against having the service. We've had others come in here and speak for keeping the service. But it seems to me in this conversation that there might be an opportunity to find a hybrid here, where we don't have the opportunity for our employees to go in after they've been plowing all day long to go and remove those windrows at night, but if you could have a contractor come in and just remove those windrows and have that as just their part of the service, that might change this bid completely. So it's just an idea to throw out there. I think it's maybe a better idea for a hybrid.
That's a great idea.
Something to think about.
Because I think that's what maybe they don't like is the sidewalks.
Mm-hmm, right. Mr. Chesak?
Yes, maybe staff, maybe Mr. Haberger, you sent out an email responding to, I think, a question from Chairman Erickson. Are you able to pull that up, the one you sent out this afternoon?
Yes, it's essentially on, on page seventeen on the handout, that's not it.
Okay, it's in the handout. Can you show that? What it does, it gives a breakdown of what we currently pay for, for the property, fifty-foot property owner pays for these events based on the number of inches and such. Can you show that and just look at the difference between what's estimated to be the charge to a property owner with fifty feet for the different events?
It's up now.
Okay. So it's about half, I think, roughly, for the city staff to do that? And I, I know a number of people have complained about the cost. I think that's what had me leaning towards this, and I thought, well, if, if this is really a bust, which I, I agree with Gabe, that this could be really difficult. I think we all know that. I mean, I, I remember when it was thirty years ago, as Jesse indicated, it, it got to be a bit difficult. And we still see the windrow here out in front, on Laurel Street in front of City Hall even, and that's, that's all taken care of by our city staff, right, currently? So when you see that windrow out here and it's crossing Laurel and Fifth and all that, and I think it, I don't know, it doesn't extend east across Sixth, but, so there are difficulties, but if people are looking at what, what are they getting for their dollar? Yeah, it's a higher cost with the new twenty percent addition. Am I correct there about the savings or the difference is about half?
Six hundred and fourteen compared to eleven hundred and thirty, so.
That's roughly, okay. Anyway, that's what I was looking at too, so I thought, well, we got a, a year. If snow falls light this year, we probably wouldn't even have a real concern, but if it's heavy, it's, it's going to be difficult for anybody, so that's why I was agreeable to moving forward with the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. So it looks like we've had a discussion here, if, if there's any final points anyone wants to make, but otherwise I think we should move on and at least vote on the motion.
Roll call, please.
We will do a roll call. Just to remind you guys, if you're voting yes, you are voting to have staff do this and not award this to a contractor.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
O'Day?
Yes. All right, moving forward.
All right, thank you very much, our third item is to approve change order number two for improvement seventeen twelve. This is Wright Street and South Tenth Reconstruction Project. Motion coming out of committee is to approve the change order number two in the amount of twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty-four and thirty cents, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak, Mr. Erickson.
Yeah, so this project, as we, we learned from last meeting and some of the discussions prior to that, was behind schedule. One of the issues that caused that was the temporary fire suppression supply lines. Uh, the issue was that in order to meet our own code, the supply lines that the contractor had were too small and so needed to, they needed to purchase larger temporary supply lines, and this is the cost for that. The alternative is provided in the packet, the alternative would be for the city to procure those at roughly ninety-three thousand dollars. And so staff had gone with this alternative of working with the contractor to get, um, get those supply lines and get that solution, which resulted in this twenty thousand dollar, four hundred and eighty-four and thirty cent cost.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. More discussion, Mr. Chazak?
Yeah, this is actually really odd because we will own this material with this change order. Is that correct?
Part of it, yes.
Part of it, all of it, isn't it?
All the material that was not returnable, correct?
Yeah, it wasn't returnable, not returnable material, so we're paying for that, but we will own it, and that's correct, right? And so we will be able to use this or perhaps, I don't know, go on a auction site and reverse some of our costs? I don't know, but it's very unusual, I think.
Thank you. More discussion?
Yeah, just a clarification, Jesse, you said the items in red are the non-returnables, is that?
Correct.
Accurate?
I believe that's, that's the case, I'd have to confirm that, but I'm pretty sure that was the case, is the red ones were the un-returnable materials.
Yep.
All right.
It's on page one sixty-six, just so you, before there.
More discussion on this? Seeing none, let's go to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries, Chairman Erickson.
All right, our fourth item, approved change order number two for improvement twenty-one thirteen, this is Beach and Oak Ridge Reconstruction. A motion coming out of committee is to approve the change order, uh, number two in the amount of fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four and fifty-eight cents, and I so move.
Second.
By Erickson, second by Chazak, Chairman Erickson.
Yeah, the reason for this one, um, with, again with Beach Street, as we learned from our last meeting, also being somewhat behind schedule, we were not able to utilize the initial detour route that we had planned through Twenty-Eighth Street and Pine Street. Uh, so staff had to work with the contractor to reroute, um, a, a new detour utilizing the county roads and the, and MinnDOTs roads. And this is the additional cost primarily for the signage.
Thank you, Chairman Erickson. More discussion on that?
Just a question, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Bevins.
So, so the fourteen, three, sixty-four, fifty-eight is because the project's behind, correct? No, I thought that's what you just said, because it was delayed, we weren't able to use the initial traffic rerouting.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding, because we weren't able to use the initial detour that we had assigned, we had selected a different detour and there was additional cost for the signs.
Any idea why we weren't able to?
Uh, because Pine Street, Beach Street, the connection of Beach and Pine, Beach wasn't completed in time.
So it was because we were, so we're having to spend fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four hours and fifty-eight cents because contractor couldn't make their deadline? That's what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Mr. Dean?
That, that's how I stated it.
Yeah, that's how you stated it, okay. I, I'm going to vote against this.
Mr. Dean, you had your hand up over there?
I can clarify, so a, a big driver of this was the condition of Twenty-Eighth Street. Wasn't necessarily attributed directly to any kind of a delay by the contractor, but Twenty-Eighth Street is in actually pretty poor condition. Uh, it's really come apart, especially this, uh, this last year. Uh, so we really didn't want to run Oak Street levels of traffic down, uh, not only Twenty-Eighth Street, but again, through the project back on the Pine. Uh, they were still working in that Pine intersection and we were concerned about the ability for them to put that back together in time for this detour, uh, to carry that amount of traffic, so. It wasn't necessarily attributed to the contractor delay, but, uh, just the conditions of what that detour would look like by the time that this work had to occur in Oak Street, uh, which is why we came up with an alternative plan.
Thank you, Jesse, I just can't fathom what a fourteen thousand dollar set of signs looks like when we were already purchasing signage for the same amount of detour.
That's just rent, by the way, we don't own them. Correct.
Those are some really special signs. I could do without them. I'm going to vote no on this. Anything else?
I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Chazak.
Okay, this doesn't pass, Jesse, what happens?
The contractor had to install these signs for the work to occur in Oak Street, so those signs were brought to the site, uh, to accommodate that work. For us not to pay the contractor, that would likely lead to a contractor claim, uh, for compensation for work completed. Uh, and we would go through the claims process from that.
Mr. Johnson.
Question, would the contractor have to complete the work before they could claim work completed?
The traffic control signage was installed.
Right, there's like seven of them on Thirteenth Street, I don't know why, it's two miles away from the project, but I've seen them. So just work completed for that fourteen thousand dollars, not that they will ever get the street done. Correct.
Yes, this, this is attributed just to the signage installed, so for the contractor, the subcontractor to come to the site, manpower, equipment, uh, and the signage materials themselves, that was what the proposal was for.
Thank you. More discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Against, same sign, aye. Okay, call the roll.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
No.
Chazak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Nope.
O'Day?
No. Mr. Mayor?
I, I don't like it at all, but I'm going to vote yes.
All right, that motion carries. With the mayor's support. Chairman Erickson.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, our fifth item, uh, approved change order number one, improvement twenty-three fourteen, Hawkins, Ronald, Joseph Resurfacing. Motion coming out of committee is to approve the change order number one in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four and fifty cents, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak, Chairman Erickson.
Essentially, two components to this one, uh, the first of which is revision to the water main pipe materials uh, for the hydrant replacement, and then the other portion is, as we had in other projects, uh, due to, um, this subcontractor being disbarred, uh, the general contractor had to, um, get a new subcontractor, and the cost associated with that is the, the, um, the second component of that.
Okay, thank you. More discussion? Johnson?
Question, can we put this off two weeks?
The contractor is really close to, uh, completing the Hawkins portion. Uh, if we wanted to wait two weeks, we would have to direct the contractor to hold off on that paving work two weeks. Uh, the concern that we have is the weather in two weeks, if it would be still conducive for paving. Uh, it's going to be really close, uh, we're already really worried about the other couple of projects. But we will take direction from the council if you want to hold off.
But your, the estimation is this project will actually be paved before the next meeting, or pavement work will have begun on it?
Work's already begun on Hawkins.
Pavement work.
The, the pavement work, we would expect within the next two weeks, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion carries, Chairman Erickson.
All right, thank you, this is our sixth item, um, award engineering services proposal for twenty-twenty-six resurfacing projects. Motion coming out of committee is to award engineering services to WSB and Associates for the twenty-twenty-six resurfacing project in the amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand and forty-two, excuse you, ninety-five thousand, forty-two dollars, zero cents, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak, Chairman Erickson.
Yeah, so there was, uh, four bids on this, um, both WSB and Associates and Bolton Menk scored very closely. Um, the other two were, the other, the first three were pretty close. The fourth dropped off substantially. Uh, the difference between the, the, the top two, um, staff, when they reviewed these, they weighted it, um, costs, uh, pretty cost-heavy, and that was the difference between the, the two. WSB came in, uh, what was it, about thirteen thousand below? Below the second highest bidder, so.
Thank you. More discussion? Looks like no more discussion, let's go to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Against, same sign. Motion carries, Chairman Erickson.
All right, our seventh item, award engineering service proposal for twenty-twenty-nine Oak Street Reconstruction Project. Motion coming out of committee is to award the proposal for engineering services for the twenty-twenty-nine Oak Street Reconstruction Project to Widseth in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and zero cents, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak, Chairman Erickson.
All right, thank you, so with their proposal, um, or the, the RFP rather, that staff put out, they included a component um, for a corridor study, as, as we all know, Oak is one of the main gateways, corridors into the community. So part of this study would include, uh, excuse me, part of the services would include that corridor study component. Uh, this eight hundred thousand would be for the engineering services, the total project cost for construction would be, uh, is estimated at three point one, three point two. And we do, I'll just add to, uh, we have a one million dollar grant that would be for the, the construction, uh, component. So just overall picture of the project, this, uh, having to do with just the engineering services would also include that corridor study and be roughly eight hundred thousand.
All right, thank you. More discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bevins?
I'm just thrilled to let you know, all of you, this will be the fourth time Oak Street's been done since I've been on the council. We're in the wrong business. Just doing Oak Street, you could make a living.
Could work four times in the last twenty years and been good to go.
Yep.
All right, more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion carries, Chairman Erickson.
All right, thank you, this is our eighth item, um, review, request the reimbursement of cost of sanitary sewer services replacement for six oh one South Ninth Street. Uh, motion coming out of committee is to direct staff, uh, to meet with the property owner and take a look at the costs for, that the property owner has outlaid for the water main portion um, and provide a cost differential for that, and I so move.
Second.
By Erickson, second by Chazak.
I'll just, I'll, I'll tee this up and, um, uh, Councilman Chazak, it sounds like you have a comment as well. Um, I think a lot of you heard kind of the, the, this last meeting and then the comments from the committee. The motion really has to do with the property owner provided a dollar amount that they were hoping to be reimbursed for. Some of that, I, it seems has to do with the service line, the Y connection, and then it does sound like there's a portion of the, the city's main line that was replaced, and so I think the gist of the motion is for, to determine the cost that the property owner outlaid for that, uh, city main portion.
All right, so this isn't actually approving any, uh, cost?
Correct, directing staff to.
Back with the number? Okay, Mr. Chazak?
Yeah, the, the intention here is to have the contractor or property owner who paid him, um, come back to staff and show them what the cost was for the actual sewer main, uh, Mr. Erickson mentioned water, it is sanitary sewer line. But i- i- it, that is the city's responsibility, the sanitary sewer line, the main, is the city's responsibility, and they replaced a portion of that. Not a very big portion, but there is labor involved, and so if we're going to be fair to people, I, I just thought it's important that we look at that and determine a relative cost for that work and the material and maybe make an amendment to, uh, their bill and we cover that. I would call it a, probably a very small portion. Not interested in paying the whole thing because that's their service line.
Thank you, Mr. Chazak, I, I will say that there's a risk to setting this as precedent, and I don't, I don't disagree with you that maybe that's the best way to go, but if you open this up to contractors replacing sanitary sewer lines, every time they come up to a main, they're going to reconnect that main and they're going to, to replace part of the main, and they know they can charge the rest of that to the city. Maybe they have to come up with an argument, but that's what you're, that's what you're opening up to in the future with this. But I'd still like to see what that cost differential is. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I appreciate this motion, this is exactly what I, where I was hoping we would go a, as a council, is figure out what the portion was the main and reimburse the property owner for that. I did catch part of the committee meeting and I guess it is pretty standard practice for the property owner to pay their contractor to fix that Y joint that looks like it may be busted in, in two different spots, I don't know, maybe it's just dirt over the top. But I think, I don't, I think maybe setting this precedent isn't a bad idea and perhaps should be a city policy that when somebody is fixing their connection to the main, that they do, if it looks like there needs to be two, three feet, that they do fix it and that the, the fund, the sewer fund, will reimburse them the small amount it costs for the additional work because that would help the entire system as a whole every time, and you wouldn't get the work that you got done in two thousand eight where they jammed in a PVC pipe and dumped a bag of quickcrete on it and called it a job. You know, so I mean, let's, it, it might be a good idea to just have as a policy going forward, but I'm very interested to see what this comes back as.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Good points.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Chazak.
I, I, I just have to ask, uh, I don't believe this is, I'm asking staff, is this a common practice when somebody's replacing their service line to have to replace a portion of the main?
Anyone from staff, Jesse?
It, it depends on the situation, some service lines, they don't even replace the Y connection, they just replace the lateral, uh, pipe itself. Uh, so it varies between, uh, the service line and service line if they have to replace the Y connection, but it is very typical that they have to replace a, a small portion of the sanitary sewer main to make the connection with the new Y. But it all depends on what's, what the service line lateral condition is and where the issue is.
Well, I kind of look at this as a cost share then, it's a small amount and that's our responsibility, the main, so.
Thank you. Johnson?
And I think that answer from Jesse reinforces my point that we may want to just make this a policy citywide because it costs a property owner looking for cost savings or a contractor trying to keep the job as, as least expensive as possible wouldn't go an extent to do that extra three feet of work because it's not theirs, they're not required to. It'd save money, but may not fix the problem, we should encourage problems on our sanitary sewer system to be fixed.
Mr. Bevins?
Here's how we do it on the north side.
Uh-oh.
So recently I had my water line done and on the, in the, the curb stop, you have to dig down to hook the new line up to the curb stop. So I have to dig a hole, I have to, the property owner, I have to pay for the copper, I have to pay for a guy to pull it from the meter inside out to the curb stop. At the same time, I have to let the public utilities know that I'm doing this, and they come out and put in a new curb stop. I don't know how much it cost them, probably twenty minutes. And I got a brand-new curb stop because they're replacing them at a certain age as they go. Why don't you just do the same thing here? You know the guy's doing it, he's going to have the hole there anyway, have the street and sewer people call out there and replace the Y. Twenty minutes, half an hour? I mean, it just, I think we're over-complicating this.
Takes the question out of the scenario, for sure.
Yeah, just to say, y- y- you have to, you have to notify the city that you're doing this, you're going to have a hole anyway. We probably have a pile of these Y's somewhere, we bought a bunch of pipe that, as Mr. Chazak said, that we're collecting pipe, so.
Could we use that?
Yeah, maybe, I don't know. With enough quickcrete, apparently we can do anything. I'm just saying, I think we're over-complicating this, I don't think we need to get into an argument every time, but I think, I presume somebody's going to go out, somebody went out and looked at this and approved it. Why didn't they bring a Y with them and go, oh, no, 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 this is a problem waiting to happen, let's just fix it. I, I don't, I don't think we need to.
I agree, I agree.
No, I think we're over-complicating this, it just would seem like, as long as we're there, if it looked like this when it was done, that would have been the time, and I realize, no, nobody on staff, I'm not pointing the figures on staff, I'm just saying, see a policy. If it needs it, let's do it while there's a hole there.
Yeah. Well, I agree, I'm, I'm pretty sure we've gotten to the point where we're not speaking about the motion anymore. But can you clarify that motion again for us, Mr. Erickson, before we go to a vote?
Thank you, yeah, the motion was to direct staff, uh, to work with the property owner, to come down, come up with a breakdown of the cost uh, that stat, that the property owner had outlaid that had to do with the main line portion only.
Thank you. So no more discussion, it looks like?
Yeah, not to pay it, pay it, but just to find out the.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion carries, Chairman Erickson.
All right, our last item, this is the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-thirty-five capital improvement plan, and the motion coming out of committee is to approve the ten-year capital improvement plan with the additional changes that were made from the discussion of the August fourth meeting, including the addition of annual sanitation, sanitary sewer main lining projects at a hundred thousand dollars per year, updated highway two-ten Washington reconstruction, twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven cost estimates, and then the last item, addition of holdover projects in twenty-twenty-five shown for continued construction, twenty-twenty-six, those are those three listed above.
Thank you.
And I so move.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chazak, any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries, Chairman Erickson.
Thank you, end of report.
Thank you, Chairman Erickson, moving on to number eight, this is unfinished business, first we have a call for applicants, and first up, we have the Honorable Mayor Bedell.
Thank you, President O'Day, we have positions available on many boards and commissions. The following are available, charter commission, two terms expiring twenty-twenty-five, two terms expiring twenty-twenty-six, library, one term expiring twenty-twenty-seven, public utilities commission, one term expiring twenty-twenty-eight, transportation advisory committee, two terms expiring twenty-twenty-five and one term expiring twenty-twenty-six. And as of November, we will also have a position available on my beloved park board as one Paul Sandy will be stepping into a position with the city, so if you are interested in the parks and want to spend most of your Tuesdays with me having a good time, let us know.
You don't want to scare people away, that's.
Best time you can possibly have on a Tuesday night.
All right, as council president, I have two terms still open for the Water Tower Committee, and that is all. Moving on to, where are we on, eight? Eight B. This is a resolution awarding the sale of General This is a resolution awarding the sale of general obligation bonds, Series 2025A, fixing their form and specification, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment. I believe this is Finance Director Connie Hillman.
Thank you. Ms. Chris Hogan with Baker Tilly is on line to present an overview of the city's bond rating as well as a tabulation of the bid results that were received earlier today.
Can you make that audio to me, okay?
We can hear you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor, Council President, and members of the council. Chris Hogan, Director Baker Tilly, served the city as their municipal advisor. Like Connie said, the city sold bonds earlier today, so I'm here to present the results of the sale result of that sale. So earlier today, the city sold 3,425,000 general obligation bonds, Series 2025A. Proceeds of those bonds will be used to finance the construction of various accessible public improvements, various improvements to the city's water and storm sewer systems, and to pay the cost of issuance of the bonds. The overall repayment term of the bonds is 20 years. The accessible improvements and storm sewer systems are going to be repaid over a 10-year period with the water system improvements paid over 20 years. The bonds will be paid with a combination of general tax levies, special assessments, and net revenues from the city's water and storm sewer funds. And the bonds were set up to have optional redemption February 1, 2035, which is a 10-year optional redemption, meaning that the city can call the bonds at that time. So about a month ago, we were, we had an estimated market true interest cost of 4.14. Last week, we always like to do an update based on current market environment, so last week, at the end of the week, we were estimating a true interest estimate of 3.75. And actual results today had the lowest bid of a tick at 3.50. So there were three bidders. These are the list of three bidders, Raymond James, Robert Fair, and T W Financial Products. And their bids, you can see on the right, the lowest one at the 3.503 was by Raymond James. And as you can see, the other two, all three bids were very close. So that's a good show of a good competitive bond.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak?
What were the other two?
The other two are 3.542048% and 3.587294%.
Yep. This is just a snapshot of the sale pricing. So this is just shows how the bonds priced, this is the 20 years. You can see that the coupons generally were higher rates than the yield, and what that means is that the bonds overall priced at a premium. That premium was 290,000 and that is basically additional bond proceeds. The premium is more, the coupon is more than the yield and thereby, like I said, it reduces, it generates additional premium or proceed. And in this case, we use those premiums, we are able to use premium to apply to reduce the bonding amount. So we started with a 3,425, we did reduce the bond issued size to 3,275. So sort of a market competitive transaction is that you go through a rating process, you get your bonds rated. This S and P, we did that rating process with S and P, S and P assigned a rating double A minus to the bonds. There's a number of reasons why you get bonds rated, but primarily you do that for, it gives measured the city's financial strength and ability to repay the debt. There's an independent third-party assessment, it supplements investors' due diligence, so investors that are interested in bidding, they, they know what the bonds are rated and they have access to, they get the rating report as well. The stronger the rating, the lower interest cost of the bonds.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Mr. Johnson has a question?
Yeah, is the double A minus rating unchanged from the last time we went out for a debt issuance?
That is correct, it's the same.
Thank you.
It kept the same rating. Just a couple of highlights or comments from the current rating report. They noted that they have, the city has healthy fund balance and liquidity, conservative management practices. The city, they noted the city has experienced continued market growth, market value and population growth. The city has a formal investment and a debt management and a fund balance policies, which are all very good things to have. And they did note that even with plans to issue additional debt in 2026, the expected cost of that debt will likely remain manageable. Factors that could lead to an upgrade would be the core metrics, if core metrics were to improve to levels comparable to higher rated peers. And factors that could lead to a downgrade would be financial deterioration, weakening of reserves or debt that would hamper financial flexibility. So given the sale and the outcome, I would recommend that the City Council approve the resolution awarding the 3,275,000 general obligation bonds, Series 2025A, to Raymond James and Associates based on their low bid of 3.50. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Second. Chris, does anybody have any questions for Chris? Any more questions? Appreciate your presentation, Chris. So we are, without any more further questions for you, but we're looking for a motion.
So move.
I didn't ask for one yet, but is that your motion?
What she just said.
And is that your second? Mr. Beavins?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion by Chesak, second by Beavins, to accept that recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. President?
Oh, go ahead and call the roll then, Tony.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Beavins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
O'Day?
Yes. All right, moving on. Eight C, we have a final reading for Proposed Ordinance 1592 text amendment for an accessory greenhouse for a cannabis microbusiness and an IUP amendment and variance request to operate a microbusiness at a current accessory greenhouse at yesterday's gone parcel ID 41241525. I believe this is direct, Community Development Director James Kramvik.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Steve Zalinski has submitted a request for a zoning text amendment to allow for a cannabis microbusiness to operate an accessory greenhouse in the Town Center zoning district. Microbusinesses with retail endorsements are allowed in the Town Center zoning district. Currently, greenhouses in this district can only be used as an accessory to a restaurant or floral shop. With this change, it would also be allowed in other commercial zoning districts. To note, only two microbusinesses have received pre-registration approval from the city code as, as, as city code only allows for two. This would not be allowed in residential districts as microbusinesses are not allowed in residential districts. The applicant has also applied for an amendment to his existing interim use permit as cannabis growth would be considered a greater use of the property and is subject to City Council approval. In addition, the applicant has also applied for a variance from the fence height requirements as commercial districts are currently allowed to have a maximum height of eight foot, of an eight-foot fence. The Office of Cannabis Management requires a 10-foot fence for security purposes. The applicant is proposing a 10-foot chain link fence. City councils should not make one sweeping motion for all the requests. Recommendation from the Planning Commission is as follows and in the order that council should consider each request. Number one, to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1592 and dispense with the actual reading. Note, a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous. Number two, to approve Proposed Ordinance 1592. Number three would be approval of the interim use permit with the following conditions: no outdoor storage, indoor storage shall be limited to material incidental to the operation of the greenhouse, cannabis products must be grown indoors, should the establishment cease operations, the greenhouse must be removed within 60 days. The interim use permit amendment is approved for a period of three years upon approval by City Council. And number four would be approval of the variance request as presented, and I can answer any questions.
Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, just a question on the variance. Is the Planning Commission going to amend our zoning code to add that 10-foot fence so it's no longer required variance since it's a state law?
At this time, they have not directed staff to do that. But it is something that if City Council would like, certainly something the staff could, could work on.
Wink, wink, Ted.
Yeah. If we had a liaison. I don't see it coming up very often in the future, but if it does, we can revisit it. Any more questions for staff? Chesak?
Yeah, Mr. Kramvik, on the interim use permit, is this something, I, I had got a number of calls, people concerned that there can be a lot of strong odor that could affect neighboring properties. And I believe you sent us an email, it's in our packet. I think you're recommending if we were to address that, we could go to a two-year interim use permit instead of a three? And then is this something that, in your opinion, would you think it appropriate to put conditions on the odor to a certain extent? I know it's hard to gauge and all that, but would you be recommending something to that effect to us before we approve the IUP to add it, add it as a condition?
So certainly City Council could reduce the term limit for the interim use permit from three to two years if there's concerns. City Council may also add, as I indicated in the email, a condition to the IUP that odors cannot be detected by a person with a normal sense of smell at the exterior of the facility or at adjoining use or property. That was from another municipal code that wasn't actually added as a condition. It would add a layer of protection to surrounding businesses and residents. However, applying this condition, if the city believes the property in violation may be difficult, there's not really a scientific measurement involved with this. So it may be added, but certainly may be difficult to interpret or discern what that looks like. And with that, I can answer any other questions.
So if, if we had nothing, there's nothing we could do. If we had something, we could then have staff or even council just go and get an indication on their own of what may be offensive or not and gauge it from there?
That's correct. So a discussion could at least be had at that point.
Okay. All right. And then if we wanted to change that, we do that at the time that comes up?
Yes, that could be added at the time of consideration of the interim use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chesak, any more questions for staff? Mayor?
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, if it's interim use permit, we can remove the interim use at any point.
That's correct. Interim use permits can be removed or stricken from the code and then they would cease operation.
So if we had any of those problems, we could just go through that process at that point?
That's correct.
All right. It is very difficult to measure smells. I don't know, Disney has come up with that yet. They had a smell, smell it, sir.
Oh, they like to create smells, but can they, with a normal person's nose, detect the smell of cannabis plants? I don't know.
Which one of our city staff has the most normal sense of smell? Do we have that person?
I don't even think we've measured that yet. But it is something to consider when we're moving forward and having this for the first time, you know, it's something to pay attention to. I'm sure there are ways to abate that smell, but we'll find out as we go here. But we're looking for, first, we're looking for a motion to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1592 and dispense with the actual reading.
So move. Second.
Motion by Chesak, second by Johnson. Discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Against, same sign. That motion carries. Next, we're looking for a motion to approve Proposed Ordinance 1592.
So move.
By Chesak.
Second Johnson.
Second by Johnson. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, Tony, call the roll.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Beavins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. Next, we are looking for approval of the interim use permit with the following conditions: no outdoor storage, indoor storage shall be limited to material incidental to the operation of the greenhouse, or of a greenhouse, and cannabis products must be grown indoors. Also, we have, should be established, should the establishment cease operations, the greenhouse must be removed within 60 days. And also, we have, the interim use permit amendment is approved for a period of three years upon approval of the City Council and approval of the variance request as presented. Do the variance separate?
I'd move the interim use permit with the stated conditions.
Motion by Johnson. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Jaeger.
I'm interested to hear the discussion.
Yeah, any discussion? Mr. Jaeger?
I do, I just had one discussion, I really was hoping to maybe do this before the motion, but it was about the, I just want to make sure, the established, the establishment ceases operations, my thinking is it could go back to a normal greenhouse, it could go back to, so I'm not sure that I'm on board with, I want someone to clarify that the greenhouse must be removed within 60 days. Does that mean the cannabis greenhouse, it can, could it go back to growing tomatoes? Just, that's all. That was my question there.
This must have been something that came up in planning and zoning.
It did not, but you could further clarify that should cannabis establishment cease operations, so there could be a further clarification in there.
That's all, sorry.
Okay, yeah, it is confusing if that's not the intent of it.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to amend my motion and remove D, since the greenhouse is in allowable use as an accessory structure to a restaurant that it could go back to growing or continue to grow vegetables and whatnot for the restaurant. So I'd like to move, amend my motion to approve the interim use permit with all of the stated conditions except for D.
And I will second the amended motion.
Okay, friendly amendment. All right, any more discussion? Seeing none? Do we need a roll call?
I would recommend it, maybe.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Against, same sign. That motion carries. Just looking for approval of a variance request as presented. Somebody have a motion on that? Motion by, was it Chesak?
Second Johnson.
Second by Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Against, same sign. That motion carries. All right, that takes care of that item. Moving on to eight D. This is a consideration for a resolution for a future land use map amendment and final reading, Proposed Ordinance 1593 rezoning the CN2 Contemporary Neighborhood 2 or GC, General Commercial, to allow for an office building at 3424 Oak Street. And I believe this is James Kramvik again.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Joel Jacobson, on behalf of Jacobson Excavating, has applied for a rezoning and a future land use map amendment from Contemporary Neighborhood 2 zoning district to General Commercial zoning district to allow for the construction of an office retail building on vacant property at 3424 Oak Street. The applicant wishes to meet clients at the property for Jacobson Excavating. If approved, the business could not operate as a contractor office with bulk materials and equipment without a conditional use permit. The applicant has included drawings for the proposed project, so City Council has an idea of the proposed use for the site. However, as this is a rezoning, it does not lock the project into the property like a conditional use permit does. Office retail is a permitted use in the GC district. As directed by council, staff did include a table that shows the difference in uses between CN2, TN2, as well as General Commercial. So with that, the recommendation is as follows: approve the attached resolution amending the future land use map designating the parcel from medium-high density to commercial. Number two would be conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1593 and dispense with the actual reading. And number three would be to approve the Proposed Ordinance 1593, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Does anybody have questions for James or staff? If there are no questions, we are looking for the first of those three action items.
So move. Second.
Motion, motion by a bunch of people up here, second by Beavins. I think it was Erickson. Second by Beavins. So any discussion on this part of the motion, this part of this item? Seeing none? Tony?
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Beavins?
Yes.
Chesak?[1745.04]
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
O'Day?
Yes. Next, we're looking for a motion to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1593 and dispense with the actual reading.
So move.
Second, Jaeger.
By Erickson, second by Jaeger. Discussion. Seeing none. Let's go to a vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we're looking for a motion to approve the Proposed Ordinance 1593.
Move to approve.
Second Johnson.
Motion by Erickson, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Tony?
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. All right, moving on to 8E. Final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1594, the signed ordinance. James Kramvik.
Thank you, Mr. President. So staff provided a summary of the ordinance at the last meeting and can answer any questions of City Council. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the Proposed Ordinance 1594. And with that, staff recommends to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1594 and dispense with the actual reading. Number two would be to approve Proposed Ordinance 1594.
Thank you, James. Any questions for James? No questions?
Move to approve.
Motion to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1594 and dispense with the actual reading. Is that what you said?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chesak, second by Erickson. Discussion. Seeing none. Let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Thank you. Moving on to next item is, or next recommended action, approval of Proposed Ordinance 1594. Do we have a motion?
So move Johnson.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Chesak. Any discussion? Tony?
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. That motion carries as well. We're on a roll now. Moving on to Proposed Ordinance 1595, amending Section 320 for administrative citations. Again, James Kramvik.
Thank you, Mr. President. So council directed staff to add junk and debris to the list that would allow for administrative abatement, as well as an expedited abatement for repeat offenders. So with that, staff recommends to first hold a public hearing, number two, to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1595 and dispense with the actual reading, and then finally approve Proposed Ordinance 1595. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, James. Anybody have questions for James? Seeing none. We're going to hold a public hearing on Proposed Ordinance 1595, and it is 8:42. I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody here to speak on this Proposed Ordinance, please do so now. Come forward to the microphone. And if you're online, you'd like to address us on this, press star three. Ask again if anybody would like to address the council on this, please come forward. And if you're online, please press star three. Not seeing anyone. Max, nobody?
Just Eric.
Just Eric. Hey, Eric. All right. With that, we will close the public hearing at 8:43. Next, we're looking to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1595 and dispense with the actual reading.
So move.
Motion by Erickson.
Second Jaeger.
Second by Jaeger. Reminder that this has to be unanimous to dispense with the reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we're looking for a motion to approve the Proposed Ordinance 1595.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Jaeger. Any discussion? Tony?
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Next, we're moving on to 8G. This is providing direction to the contested nuisance assessments. And this is again, James Kramvik. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. President. So at the last meeting, City Council adopted a resolution with the full nuisance assessment amount, and staff indicated that additional information would be provided at the next meeting for the three properties disputing their assessments. First one was 523 Grove Street, which had some property maintenance issues that have been corrected. Paint was the specific issue with that property. Staff noted some other minor issues in which violations have been sent after review of the property before the packet went out. 1718 Pine Street originally corrected their junk and debris issue, but has since added junk and debris and is currently not compliant. Letters were also sent for that. And then 1420 Quinn Street received a $7,000 vacant registry fee. The fee was for an unfinished house project lasting several years with significant junk and debris and blight in the yard. The exterior project is nearing completion, and staff no longer considers the property to have significant blight. Staff did note that a couch is in the rear yard, which a letter was also sent for that. So after reviewing the memo and additional documents, City Council may consider the following for each property: remove the nuisance assessment total, uphold the nuisance assessment total, or modify slash reduce the nuisance assessment total. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kramvik. Anybody have questions for James?
One question.
Mr. Johnson.
It wasn't clear to me, what are you recommending?
Staff did not provide a specific recommendation for each one of them.
You just provided an update on where the property is.
An update on each one of them. Certainly, staff would provide a recommendation if something was made in error, or if something was promised to the resident that the fees would be waived upon completion. That did not occur for any of the three properties.
They've all still have the same problems, or similar problems. They have not fixed all of the problems.
Yeah, staff didn't make any promises that fees would be waived, nor did any of them were made in error.
And it sounds like all three are still a problem in the city, and I think I'm favorable to keeping the assessment total.
Second.
Mr. Chesak?
Was there a motion?
No.
Oh, okay.
Just a second. But go ahead, Mr. Chesak.
Help us out, Mr. Chesak. Okay. I just had a question on the third one with the $7,000. What's that called again?
Vacant registry fee.
And is that, they can get that reimbursed still, correct? By going through the...
At this time, it would not be if it were to be assessed to the property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson.
I just want to say, just remind you, Jeff, 1420 Quinn's is the one that's been under construction for in excess of 12 years and hasn't had anybody living in it, hasn't completed any projects. I'm surprised you could see the couch in the backyard, given all of the other junk that's laying there. So it is a vacant house, and we do have a vacant house registry, and it deserves to be on it.
Thank you. Any more comments? If anyone wants to take a shot at a motion?
I'll make a motion to uphold the nuisance assessment total.
Second.
All right. Motion by Jaeger, second by Bevins. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. Let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion carries. Moving on to 8H. This is a continuance of public hearing and consideration of assessments for improvements 2316. Again, this is actually City Engineer Jesse Dean.
Thank you, Mr. President. So at the last meeting on October 6th, there is one proposed assessment that was pulled from the assessment roll at request of the council for any contestations for the proposed assessment on the South Brainerd resurfacing project. We did not receive any further contestations in that time. Mr. Lundin's property is the one that is contesting his assessment. The council did hear from him at the public hearing at the last meeting, and staff did include the documentation that was provided to the council in the packet. Staff did review this, and we are, we did try to address a lot of the drainage issues with the project. A lot of it was related to some of the issues with the catch basins in that area. We further looked into this with the small water, this small amount of standing water right nearby his property, to see what further could be done, because we are sensitive to the concerns that he does have in regards to that little spot there. While it does have grade, and it can drain to the catch basins, we did review that with both Bolton and Mink and Knife River, and they are performing a cutout and patch of that area right there in front of his property. They did remove it today. They're planning to get that paved back in tomorrow. So we are addressing that area of concern for him specifically on that one spot that was indicated in some of the slides there. With that, staff is recommending holding the holdover public hearing for the assessment from the October 6 meeting. At the conclusion of that, staff is recommending adoption of the attached resolution that adopts the assessment for that specific property, PID 41350550. And I can answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm glad to hear that we are trying to, you know, re-put some pavement down to fix the drainage issue that clearly existed before and still exists. But I'm under the impression that the contractors out there in the project tried to address the drainage issue. They had a little bit of a lip or something to try to send, and it didn't work the first time. How can we be so confident that it's going to work this time with the new patch?
Mr. Dean?
So the first two, this, it's essentially an infrared where they heat up the pavement and try and re-roll it to try and smoothen out the imperfection. So they did that twice, and that's the remainder of kind of what you saw there, was that little strip of standing water. Here, we're not going to try that infrared. We're actually just going to cut and replace.
And just have a bigger slope.
You're right. We verified that with Bolton and Mink, that there is enough grade to go from where we cut out to the curb and gutter, so there shouldn't be a concern there.
Thank you.
Thank you. More questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Chesak?
Is there an additional cost to the contractor? Would that work?
That'll be something that we're going to borne as a city, because we are directing the contractor to address that.
Thank you. All right, more questions. Mr. Mayor?
More of a comment. I just want to say that this is a good example of, if you have an issue with these projects that are occurring, let us know, and hopefully we can work something out to get it fixed. So this is a great example of something that clearly needed to be fixed, and we are able to take care of it. And that can't always be the case, but in most instances, when something like this arises, just come forward with it, so we can at least have that conversation.
We'll see. When it rains next time.
Oh, I would also like to add, can we...
There's always proof.
Yeah. Once we get through it, I have a comment afterwards as well.
Yep. Mr. Jaeger, do you have something?
No, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing nothing more. We will open and hold the holdover public hearing that was adjourned from October 6, 2025 meeting. So we'll open that now. It's 8:51. If you're here for that public hearing for that project, improvement 2316, please come forward. Or if you are online, press star three. Not you, Eric. I mean, you can, I guess. Anyone here want to come forward for this project? Please do so. Looks like nobody. So we'll close the public hearing at 8:52. Next, we're looking for a motion to adopt the attached resolution after conclusion of this public hearing, adopting the assessment for PID 41350550.
So move, Jaeger.
Motion by Jaeger.
Second Johnson.
Second by Johnson. Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bevins?
I'm going to vote against it. I just don't have the same faith. I'm sorry. I mean, we did it, everybody knew ahead of time this was a problem. He had pictures from before. It's 2,574 hours and 20 cents that we're going to saddle the guy with to not fix the problem that he asked to have fixed before the project was even started. I just think it should, I mean, if we could, if we could get it done and be sure, but I don't think it's fair to him. I think the mayor might be incorrect on this one. I don't think this worked on his behalf. I mean, I'm just, I don't have the faith, especially when he showed it to us twice beforehand. I'm sure the contractor wants it to be done so they can get paid. But to pull this now, I think is the right thing to do. So I'm going to vote against this.
Okay.
I think the rest of it should be certified, but...
So you'd rather have the 2,574?
I'd rather have it in the customer's pocket.
Okay.
Right now, because, I mean, imagine buying a car and being asked to pay for it, but you can't have it. But maybe you can have it in two weeks. Maybe. Maybe not. Maybe you can have it in two weeks, but we're not going to have it until the next time it rains, and we can see, you're going to end up with the same situation that you got with those people out in southwest Brainerd with County Road 48 draining into their property. You know, Danny Bolig and those people. You can have the exact same thing here. The potential is. It's easier for us to not, to shoulder the burden. It was our project. He didn't come asking for it.
Yeah, I see your argument. More discussions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak?
To Mr. Bevins's point, if we were to vote this down, and I think, I think if I could, Kelly, you're waiting, you want to just wait and see how it turns out? Is that what you're suggesting?
Absolutely. I mean, I think we can find a way, come to an agreement with the property owner if it works. I don't think, you know, I don't know how you would legally do that. You'd ask him to pay for it.
My assumption is that property owner will be right back in here if it doesn't work.
Mine too.
But with...
But it could be a year down the road. And here he is. You know, I mean, he did everything he could do to tell you that the problem he had didn't work, didn't fix that we, that we're asking him to pay for, didn't work.
Okay.
So, Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak.
If I could ask staff, and maybe I'm not following the process here, but the motion is to approve the assessment on this individual's property with the expectation that the problem is going to be fixed. If we don't approve it, can we bring this back if, once we learn that at least initially it seems to be fixed?
Mr. Lengel, do you have an answer to that?
Yeah, Mayor Council. So he's reserved the right to appeal by filing his objection. If you pass this tonight, then you're essentially overriding his objection and approving the assessment. So at that point, if, for whatever reason, the street repair doesn't work, could you settle with him on the objection? Or if he appeals it further, yes, you could do that.
Thank you. If this didn't pass, would we just be essentially holding another continuance of the public hearing and then hearing this one more time?
You could continue this again if another two weeks will provide some rain evidence.
We could keep going for a year if you wanted.
That's right, another three years.
Yeah. Mr. Jaeger?
I just want to, just where I'm at on this, to me, the assessment and the repair are kind of not related. If, you're getting, he's going to get assessed for fixing, for the street repairs, like everyone does in this city. We pay for assessments. The fact that we've got an issue that needs fixed, either it needs fixed and we need to fix it, or keep trying to fix it, or eventually get to a point of where it is fixed. I think that never goes away. To me, the two are kind of not related. I think he can come back and say, hey, look, guys still didn't fix this, in which case, we send the street guys out there, and we just keep going until we eventually get it fixed. But still, I don't, I'm not sure that I see us in a place where, okay, we're just going to let people just leverage money till we get things fixed to where they think it should be. I just, that seems weird to me. To me, you pay for something, and then if you're, if it's not working, you go back, you get it fixed. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, it is a tough one. Johnson, go ahead.
Yeah, I seconded the motion, but I think, I think Kelly has me convinced, especially after Joe spoke. Like, I don't want to override his objection. I fully agree with his objection, and I think his objection is related to, directly to the assessment, because we assess abutting property owners, and legally, we can't assess more than the value added to the property. And when we're draining water and creating a big pool in front of his property, we're not adding any value. He shouldn't have to pay $2,500 unless we fix the problem of the water pooling that he let us know of ahead of time. You know, like the perfect citizen did everything right, like Kelly said. And here we are. We're working on it. I'm hopeful we get it fixed, but we haven't yet gotten it fixed. So I'm with Kelly. I think I'd want to keep 4135055 out until it's fixed, and then address it at that time.
Okay. One of two ways to go about it. We either, we either approve it, or we fix it, we find out if it's fixed or not later, and he comes back to us. Mr. Dean, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to add to the timeline from the attorney. So the waiting for the next meeting, it does add a little bit of complication, because after the assessment, or the assessment is ratified, that starts a 30-day prepayment clock for the property order to prepay that assessment without interest before it goes to the county, and the county has a deadline of December 1st to us to get those put on the tax rolls. So this is kind of that last meeting to start that 30-day clock before that deadline. But we'll take our direction from the council. I mean, we can continue to address this until it is corrected, if that's the case from the council, or continue to hold this out. It's just, that's the complication with a 30-day payment clock.
I think the big thing is that it gets fixed. I think that, we're all in agreement on that up here, making sure that that gets fixed. Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, currently, the contractor is working on this. There comes a point in time where that won't be the case, right? If it's not fixed correctly, or do we just keep having them go back to try and fix it? Because I think Mr. Jaeger mentioned city staff just keeps going back, and the city street, is that, is that, does that pose a problem here with who's actually doing the work right now?
We would go back to the contractor to repair this at this point. Obviously, the, I'll call them rehab treatments of the infrared did not solve the issue, which is why we're which is why we're doing the cut and patch, which is a little bit more obviously invasive. Uh, if this doesn't solve the issue, then we would go back to the contractor to correct it.
So, I, I mean, if it's, uh, April, we can do that?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Just as a follow-up to my comment that Kelly, uh, so rudely said that, you know, I have too much faith in this getting done. My follow-up comment was going to be that I would like to see this come back to us so that we have some kind of reassurance that this has been done correctly and we're not just leaving this, um, citizen out on their own to fend for themselves, that we're keeping an eye on this. Because I agree with you, uh, Chairman, or excuse me, President O'Day, that the goal is to get this fixed. So let's get it done. Let's get it corrected. And whatever process we take in order to do that, I, I honestly don't care. Just get it done. That's my biggest concern.
As fast as possible.
Yes.
Anyone else? It's time to take a vote on this. Um, Tony?
Can we clarify the motion? Sorry.
Yeah, clarify the motion. Who, whose motion was this?
Kevin. It was my, it was my motion to, to, to move forward with the, uh.
You went with the recommendation?
Yes.
So you're recommending, this is a motion to adopt the attached resolution?
At this point, I'm gonna rescind my motion. If I, if I'm able to do that.
Mr.?
I'm convinced. You got, I'm convinced. And if I'm gonna err in any direction, I'm gonna err on the side of a citizen. So all the hubbub works. Uh, I'm, I'm convinced.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bevins?
I move to adopt the attached resolution, uh, setting aside the assessment for PID 41350550.
Second.
By Bevins, second by Johnson. On the new motion, any discussion? Oh, good. Except for you. Okay? Attorney Langle.
So just for clarification, setting aside, meaning you gotta hold the hearing, you're gonna, uh, table the hearing?
Leaving off.
Is that?
Leaving off the assessment.
Well, how, for how long?
Motion to deal with that.
Oh.
But not including, leaving off, not assessing. Okay.
Okay. Pretty clear? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. This is a resolution? No. Come on, Johnson. An hour and a half into this. Don't start messing with me now. It's my birthday.
Let's adopt the attached.
I'm gonna move next that we make a statue to Mayor Bedeau because I treated him so poorly.
So it was a resolution. Go ahead, Tony.
Yes.
Jaeger. Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chazak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. That carries. Mr. Bevins?
I have a second motion. I move that staff work with the property owner at, uh, 41350550 as to how to ha- as to how to handle the 2,57420 equitably handle after the repairs are successful.
Second.
Motion by Bevins, second by Johnson. Is that clear to everybody? Any discussion on it?
It's not clear to you?
I was gonna say, it looks like.
Mr. Langle.
Given that we're at the hearing stage for that property, I would, it would be best of adding to that motion that we would continue to hold over the hearing until the next council meeting.
Add to that motion? That's fine.
I have no problem.
Okay. Friendly amendment? Seconders, okay? All right.
Um, question?
Mr. Chazak.
How does it determine when the, um, fix is successful? Who determines that?
It sounds like a discussion between staff and the citizen.
Okay.
It's fixed until the water pools.
Good enough.
More discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Against, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. 9A, we are revisiting potential organizational changes with appropriate charter language. I believe this is Administrator Broyles.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the 7 April council meeting, a motion passed to cease and desist discussions of utility services to be included in the Public Works Department being amended with a charter change. Staff feels that we, we potentially have an opportunity for some potential organizational changes that we would like to discuss with the Charter Commission and if they see fit to bring before the City Council. So staff is basically asking for some reprieve from that 7 April motion to explore some creative and innovative ideas as we look at some potential organizational changes. So the recommended motion from staff would be to move to allow staff to discuss potential organizational changes with both the Charter Commission and the City Council.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chazak.
I would move to rescind the motion from April 7th to cease and desist all discussion of moving public utility services to Public Works.
Motion by Chazak, second by, was it Bevins?
Yep.
Any discussion on that motion?
Uh, yes, um.
Mr. Chazak.
It, it, it's the same thing as Mr. Broyles is asking for.
Yep.
They're free to do as they wish with that motion.
Yep, that was the motion, kind of putting a halt to those discussions. All right. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, same sign.
Aye.
Motion still carries. Moving on to 9B. This is a resolution, um, to receive a feasibility report and call for a public hearing on Improvement 2505 Southeast Brainerd Reconstruction Project. And I believe this is, uh, Jesse Dean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so, uh, a few meetings ago, we had the council adopt a resolution that ordered the feasibility report. We've prepared that feasibility report with, uh, kind of a follow-up from the informational meeting that we held with residents on August 19th here at City Hall to kind of go over the, uh, scope of work, including the, the discussion topics that were brought up, uh, with the council in regard to some of the new sidewalk, paving of Laurel Street, uh, and the like. Uh, so some of those comments and, you know, at least the general sentiment was included in that feasibility report for council review. Uh, at this point, staff is recommending adoption of the attached resolution that receives the feasibility report as presented and then calling for a public hearing on the proposed improvement, uh, proposed to be held on November 17th at the council meeting at 7:30.
All right, thank you. Anybody have questions? Doesn't look like it. We're just looking for a motion, motion to recommend adopting the resolution, receive the attached feasibility report and calling for a public hearing on the proposed improvement to be held November 17th, 2025, 7:30 PM.
So move Johnson.
Second, Bevins.
By Johnson, second Bevins. Any discussion? Tony?
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chazak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yep.
O'Day?
Yes. That motion carries. All right, moving on to staff reports. Tony Gage, you got something, right? Still not anything yet. Okay. Chief Davis?
Just like to invite all trick-or-treaters to stop by the Brainerd Police Department Halloween evening from 3:30 to 6:00. Say hi and, uh, get a little candy.
Thank you. Max Henon, CLC.
Happy birthday, but not today.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, oh, make a statue for you as well.
Finance.
Quick over there.
Mike Abagors.
Yes, the, uh, only thing that I have is that the annex, um, proposal for remodel and improvement will be on the next council agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again.
James Kravik?
Thank you, Mr. President. So from the last, uh, Planning Commission meeting, the commission, uh, did a review of the Shoreland ordinance and directed staff to work with the DNR and a few corrections. Uh, staff will be meeting with DNR to discuss those changes and the, uh, commission is planning on holding a public hearing in December. Uh, also, the Planning Commission has begun discussions on an update to the comprehensive plan. Uh, major goal will be to increase the threshold for a mandatory EAW. Uh, one major component is evaluating the implementation of the comprehensive plan and that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Kravik. Joe Langle? Chris Schubert? Jesse Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we've talked a handful of product, project updates. There's a, just a couple more I want to highlight. Uh, the M Street downfall up by the, uh, Evergreen Cemetery is progressing. We're running in, uh, into some rather unexpected surprises out there, but, uh, we are still moving forward and trying to get that wrapped up here over the next couple of weeks. And then the roundabout, uh, is moving forward very quickly. Uh, they're wrapping up a lot of stuff, uh, this week. Uh, we had a little bit of delay in some of the signage that we need to have installed for safety purposes. So it's gonna wait a little bit longer to get that opened up. Uh, but we're very hopeful that things should be open at that roundabout before Halloween. Uh, that's kind of what they're shooting for is Halloween, but it may even be a day or two sooner than that. Uh, so things like the chunker treat at, uh, the Lutheran Church there should be able to progress without any kind of hindrance with that.
Thank you, Mr. Dean, for that disappointing thing that you just told us about at the end. Eric Sharfendier, HRA.
Yes, Mr. President. Do have one update tonight. Uh, wanted to let the council know that we were successful in, uh, our application for a deed small cities grant for $600,000 to be used for the street skating project on the Washington Street reconstruction for next year, which is really good news. Uh, thanks to, you know, a couple of my staff for getting that, um, grant put through and this will help offset the city's portion of the cost for some of that streetscape, uh, improvements that will happen for the next two years. So I wanted to let, uh, the council know about that and we're, we're very excited to be able to, to help with that project.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks for the great news. Administrator Broyles?
Three things. First, congratulations. Paul Sandy, he's gonna be a great addition to the team. Second, um, received some kind words from folks as we were out in New Mexico and we dealt with some medical things with my mother. She is doing well. Her situation gave me more time with our one-year-old grandson, so it was bittersweet, but we're glad to be back home. Last thing is the ICMA conference. If, if, just as, just by, by a, by a reminder, that's the International City and County Managers Association. The annual conference is in Florida. I will be flying out Friday. I will be returning next Wednesday. So I'll be down for our, I was in Pittsburgh last year, gonna be in Florida this year, so looking forward to that.
Where in Florida?
Tampa Bay. Right in the middle of hurricane season.
Yeah.
Good luck.
It's a fun airport.
Thank you, Administrator Broyles. Next we have the Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
Oh, I have four items. I know that's more than three, but it is four. Uh, first of all, I wanna, I don't know if you guys were paying attention during that bonding thing, but I really appreciated when the bonding lady said that if our bond rating was better, our bond rating would be better. I really appreciated that part of it. That was good insight. Uh, secondary, momentous occasion tonight, folks. Momentous occasion. The mayor voted tonight. Put it on the, put it in the paper. Make sure that everyone's aware. I had something to do tonight. It was amazing. Uh, also, the downtown spooktacular will be happening this Saturday, 11 to 1. So I don't know if you've ever participated in that, but a lot of kids getting down there, getting some candy. Again, 11 to 1 downtown. Uh, please participate in that if you got small children. I know that all the businesses down there love having them, so. Uh, and then just lastly, just a quick note, I, you, you may have noticed that tonight, uh, Councilmember Stunek is not with us. Um, he is having some health issues and, uh, I, I was asked to just, uh, quickly say to everyone, uh, please keep him in your prayers and, uh, he's gonna be gone for a little bit from us, but he's gonna be back. So, uh, just be thinking about Councilman Stunek and, uh, we look forward to his return. End of report.
Mr. Mayor? Let's move on to Mr. Chazak.
Thank you, President O'Day. Um, one thing I, um, just wanted to wish a belated happy birthday to one of our cornerstone, cornerstone pillars of our community. Five days belated and, uh, not many of you historians will know, but she actually was able to set the cornerstone of this building, Mary Cope, 93 years old, on the 15th of October. God bless her.
Thank you, Mr. Chazak. Mr. Bevins?
Thank you. I, uh, had a chance to run down to the firehouse, open house last week or two weeks ago and what a hoot that is. If you have not gone, I mean, it's not just for kids, although kids can go, you know, I mean, they really put on a good open house at our fire department. So thank you to everybody. They had a helicopter there. I mean, it was cool. I didn't want to leave.
Did you get a helmet?
You know, I, I had an opportunity to get a helmet, but I passed because I figured I'm beyond help.
Did they put you in the dog suit?
No.
Oh.
I don't fit. It's a little dog suit.
Jaeger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The airport ticker, uh, da, da, da. Uh, so a couple of things. Uh, new, our new airport, uh, our new ARF employee started and, uh, we welcome him aboard, Patrick Nelson. He got, we gotta get him a little bit of fire training. We're just, uh, get him up to speed, but, uh, had a good pleasure of meeting him today. Seems like a great guy and we welcome him aboard. Uh, unfortunately, uh, he's being brought aboard because we are losing a longtime employee by the name of Jim Wolfe out there who's been with us for a very long time. And we are taking, uh, some time on October 27th at 1 o'clock to show some appreciation, uh, for his, uh, years of great service out there. He's just been, uh, you know, a, a pillar of the airport out there and, uh, we sure hate to see him go. Uh, I'll, quick update on our new director. We, uh, are, we are open for, uh, receiving applications for our director and that, uh, will remain open until the 24th. And I will say, we've had a highly fruitful turnout already. Uh, we've received at least 20 applications. Uh, m- many of those are highly, highly qualified people to take over the directorial role. So, uh, the Airport Commission certainly has, is gonna have, uh, their hands full with, uh, trying to select this new person. I'd like to thank Mr. Planzer for his help with that and, and our intent is to, uh, make an announcement or, or offer that job at the December meeting for the Airport Commission. So we've gonna do some interviewing process throughout, uh, November, but hopefully at the December meeting, we'll be making a recommendation there. So, good, good, great news there. Government shutdown has a potential delay on the EAS announcement regarding our, uh, you know, our pending, uh, service provider for EAS. We're still hoping for an early November announcement, uh, with, uh, our EAS, uh, provider out there. And just a couple other, couple, uh, little fun tidbits. The EAA who meets out there, uh, that's the, uh, Experimental Aircraft Association. Believe it or not, there's a lot of experimental aircraft, aircraft over our heads every single day. About 10% of the aircraft in the, in the sky are experimental. But anyways, there's a group of guys, they're EAA and they're a group of people and, uh, they meet every, uh, first Saturday every, um, uh, month out there. And last month, they did a, if, they basically a flyer, they, they invite kids, anybody who wants to come and they take them for flights. They get a bunch of pilots and they took 59 kids for flights around Brainerd to try to introduce those, uh, children, kids into the role of aviation. So huge thanks to those, uh, pilots and for those guys for putting that on, all the kids that showed up. It was awesome. Youth Fly, that was our Youth Fly and EAA is also has something else, uh, that's really exciting that you're gonna want to get out to the airport to see. They have been, uh, restoring a 1933 Longster. This is a four-cylinder airplane, uh, which we will be hanging in the foyer, in the rafters, uh, in, in the, uh, near future. And it's gonna be a really cool addition to the airport. It's gonna be fun to see. So we're partnering with, uh, Mead and Hunt. We're partnering with High Tech out there. Mr. Planzer has been so generous as to help with, uh, there's costs associated with this, as you quite imagine. And, uh, yeah, get out and, uh, check it out. It's named the, uh, Edna G after the first female flight instructor, uh, in the United States. So it's, uh, kind of a cool thing. And that is your ticker on the, uh, yep, da, 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 on the airport, uh, report.
I give you 10 bucks for that.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. If I were to dress up as a kid and go out to the airport, would they put me in an experimental aircraft and fly me around Brainerd?
Actually, uh, and I, uh, stand, standing invitation, anybody that would like to go out to the airport and get a tour of the facility, the, uh, the equipment and do what I did last year, which is get a ride in a snowplow while they're plowing out there. You gotta kind of coordinate that with the event, obviously. But, uh, the, uh, our airport is your airport. So come on out, have a look, see what we do out there every single day and we love to have people. And just as a little hint, this is a little spoiler, we are looking at potentially a pretty big deal in the spring, which will be some version of an open house, fly-in, car show, food, kids, all kinds of jazz in the, in, uh, coming up in, in, uh, in the spring.
Does Mr. O'Day already know he dresses like a kid?
How do you know, Jeff?
Words around town.
So your, so your answer is yes?
Yes.
Okay.
We invite anyone out. Come on out.
Yep. Mr. Jaeger. Chairman Johnson?
Oh, Max already stole my thunder. I was gonna wish you a happy birthday, but I was also going to offer City Administrator Broyles the opportunity, since it is Mike's birthday today, you're here at a city council meeting. You would like to sing him happy birthday, a solo rendition of Happy Birthday.
Here's a birthday song. It's not too long. Hey.
I would yield my time to you.
Don't do it. Don't do it. It's a trick.
It'll pass. Well, I'll try next time we have a birthday.
Jim Thoreen used to do it all the time. And by all the time, I mean all the time.
Jim Thoreen is not here. Chairman Erickson?
Nothing further. Thank you.
All right. And let it be known that I do not make a big deal out of my birthday. I just wanted Mr. Johnson to stop picking on me and I use it as an excuse. Otherwise, nobody would have known.
It was my birthday last meeting. Did you hear it one single time? No, you did not. I've heard nothing but your birthday tonight.
Nobody was picking on you.
I just threw out the idea of making you a statue. Quit your whining.
All right, I have nothing further to add tonight. Thank you, everybody, for putting up with us again. Uh, we will see you in a couple of weeks. We're looking for a. Motion to adjourn?
Yep.
By Bevins.
Second.
Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Against, same sign. We adjourn.